This conference will now be recorded.
All right, ready for roll call? Mike Borginini, Floyd Colston, Brendan Jolene, Chris Johnson, Travis Peirman, Dwayne Eastman, Cody Richardson, and Donnie Smith.
Okay. Gentlemen, if you look over your minutes. Motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the statement, I would like to oppose. Move to Kansas. I am going to motion to open the public hearing. Set aside the advisability of vacating the North 8 feet of Washington Avenue from the east line of Summit to the west line of the alley adjacent to Lot 14, Block 69, original town to current city.
Open the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the statement, I would like to oppose. Public hearing is open.
Okay. I don't know why that was cleared down there. That was where... Actually, I do. Whatever. So this request, as was stated, was for vacation of a portion of Washington Avenue along 226 South Summit. This was filed by Cody Belts. He's looking to build a porch access along the property line. And the downtown area buildings are built right up to the property line. And so if you were going to have anything outside of the footprint of the building, it would be an encroachment on the right of way. And so that's the issue at hand here. That's where that request came from. The request, as is presented, is eight feet of that sidewalk. It does leave somewhere about six feet or so of sidewalk left after that, as approved. The other thing is final design approval of whatever he's doing would have to go through the Historic Preservation Board as well. So this area was plotted, it's original town, so it was plotted in 1873. And it has really wide right of ways because this is the Central Business District, we get that. As far as kind of the normal things we go through on vacations, technical advisory committee didn't have any concerns, utilities anyways. All property owners were notified that are within 200 feet of the property. So some private rights, public gain loss, what might happen with this proposal. What I have heard from the public, and there is also some extra concerns that planning commissioners have on the table as well, that this would limit this width of the sidewalk that's remaining. Like I said, they're still wide enough for purposes of ADA. That's not an issue. Would note that the current steps aren't up to code when they're accessing that building. And what he would be proposing would actually remedy that. So here's the area to be vacated. It's along the side of the building here. Here is the existing steps, so the proposed porch would be in this area here. And there's a mock-up here too, as well. This is what the building looked like, and we had to guess a little bit on the timeframe. Looks like 40s based on the cars. There didn't appear to be much of a sidewalk at that time. There was an access to the basement from the sidewalk that was in place at that period. By the 70s, I can't remember what that looked like. Again, that's just an estimated, we're not sure on the date of this photo. It looks like that is still there, they're still railing there at the time. So it probably was 80s, some of you may have an idea of when that actually happened, when it was filled in. But it was filled in and goes up to the edge of the building. This is a rendering that Mr. Belts provided. So the idea would be, would go guessing back to the back wall of the building and then cover these three, well, two windows and the door here. And not go all the way to the front, just up to that edge of that. So again, this would actually increase the safety for not only the applicant, but the general public compared to what's actually there today. This is a portion of the plat that's affected. So on the plat, this is Fourth Avenue. Don't be confused by that, see Fifth Avenue is up here. But Fourth Avenue is today's Washington. It's this sliver here by the slot 14. So at this time, so I've gone back and forth on this request, to be honest with you. At this time, officially, I don't have an issue with approving this because it does leave a little bit of space there. Still has some space there to walk by it, and it deals with the safety issue of the steps. So that's kind of... Well, I have for you to start with.
What is the length?
The length of the porch?
Yes, safety wide, what is the proposed length?
I would defer to the applicant.
I had a final length. I wanted to talk to our builder about how we could eventually put in wheelchair ramps if in future were needed. Because the design of that, it's terrorist. So you have, and so I don't have a final length, but it would not run the entirety of the building.
But if you eventually hope to add wheelchair access ramps, you would actually need to go even further than what is proposed now.
Yes, ma'am. The sketch you see there was just to give a rough idea of what we're trying to do. So that and the terminus of where people would walk up could be further down the building, but it wouldn't extend all the way up to where the railing used to be.
Did you realize that there is no grandfather clause applied here?
Sister, I'm so sorry. My hearing is terrible.
Do you want to move further out?
If that will help, yes, ma'am.
Should just bring a chair up a little bit, see if that will help you.
I can't. Might as well put my stuff here on the corner.
That's fine.
All right. Sorry.
You do understand that there is no grandfather clause applied here?
Well, I can't say I do. So where this started was in getting the building cleaned out. We were doing work in the basement. We've removed about 38 tons of material. We found the old exterior staircase was still present. There are three doorways into our basement. It used to be a pool hall, bowling alley. And so that's kind of where the genesis of this discussion started was, okay, how long was that? Because it's a substantial room. And that's where we got the idea for the measurement, is the width of what we have in that stairwell. And so I knew I needed to try to find some way to make those stairs safer. And so when we found that stairwell, then I started talking to people locally about, you know, we put a post-up on our business page, and then we had anecdotes about, you know, going down there for the 80s for haunted houses and stuff. So that was where this started. And then I spoke with Josh to try to confirm where the property line was. And he put me in contact with a surveyor who had done some work in the area. And they said that, yes, they believed without coming out and spending a bunch of money, that our property line probably was the building's wall, but that we would have a historic right of access because there used to be stairs there and the other businesses. So that's when we started on this process because we were told this was the best way, most open and transparent, let everybody know what we were doing.
Let me stop you there. When that was removed, it eliminated the grandfather clause.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't have the grandfather clause to claim. Also, many years ago, those stairs, and you'll find them throughout the town, but they're narrow, they're only four feet. Some are four feet, some are up to 52 inches. I found one that includes the fence and some cement bumper, it was 56 inches. Those were to access stores that were underneath, like yours, the bowling alley.
Yes, ma'am.
There was nice compartment, there was a children clothing shop. There were many stores underneath
Yes, ma'am.
the building, your building and all the other buildings.
Yes, ma'am.
There were storefronts, and some of the buildings turned down to the basement. You can actually still see the black storefront.
Yeah.
So signage, all sorts of things are still there. But that was all eliminated. There is no grandfather in any of that. To take eight feet, tremendous amount of sidewalk gone.
Well, and to be very clear, I'm willing to adjust that width. That was just based on, we measured what we had in the basement. And then I looked at where that put us. And so it was easier to say, instead of seven foot whatever, just go to eight because that makes it in line with the edge of our alley.
I understand that. So before I say more, let me see what... We have some attendees here since we have other commissioners here. So let's move that around. But this way so I can see.
Okay, okay. I'll move back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have some people here. Would you like, if you have something to say, would you give me your name?
Okay, I'll go first.
Your name?
My name is Derek Koller.
Derek Koller?
K-O-L-L-E-R. I own the Land Resi-Take Mall, my mom, Lisa Koller here. I'll keep it short. I think the letter speaks for itself. There are 10 businesses that signed it, with 13 names.
I don't have a...
We should have a letter.
Yeah. Sorry, I should have mentioned.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Okay, I understand this is a crank, and that precedents, if you approve this partially and essentially, because you'll have more requests like this. I also think, when you think about the city's master plan, the city is trying to promote more foot traffic. Recently, they made four sidewalks. And I measured those sidewalks, there's a 10 feet wide. So I don't think we should be decreasing sidewalks plus the 10 feet. Because 10 feet gives enough room. We have people walking with dogs, where people walk with their culture, ask each other. Also, a lot of times, I'll help packages go from the Land Resi-Take Mall. To me, it's easier just to walk over there. But if that sidewalk gets disrupted, it might be easier for me to drive over there. Talking about two blocks.
This sidewalk is, as I understand it, it's 14 foot, four inches, right?
Yes, 14.
So taking eight feet would leave six foot, four inches, not counting... Now, when our cars there, cars overturning the median. So we're talking leaving a... Probably a little less than six foot. I'll listen. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and the signs that are there.
Yes, oh, and you've got poles. The number five. I went by there earlier today. So you're only going through the only parts, not the whole, which were there. Yeah.
Also want to mention that the sidewalk could find my building from my windows. My doors actually kind of ended up in the front. It's 14 and a half feet. I think we need to keep wide sidewalks downtown to promote people going downtown, being able to walk from point A to point B to point C. Because like I said, you know, that's kind of the master plan, get people walking more, use less vehicles, less emissions. And actually, when you do have a walking part, that actually helps promote better health. And I think that's pretty much mine besides the letter, which has, like I said, 10 businesses with 13 signatures. And like I said, the ramp part I get, you know, but to take public right of way and take a big portion of it and use for a private porch, I don't agree with. But I do get, you know, you might want to have a ramp, and the ramps are required, and there's just a step, it's like, I think, 44 inches, the bottom of the sidewalk to the landing. So that's probably require at least 44 foot ramp.
Ramp, take that with it. But this also acts in some other ways too.
I did, so I was looking at the historic right, which he said, and I have some pictures here that actually shows how much of the sidewalk that he'd take. I sent this to Josh, that hopefully he'll deal with it.
Yeah.
If not, I can pass this around.
Planning commissioners all have this.
Okay, yeah, so that box represents eight feet. It should actually show you how much of the sidewalk that he'd be taking. And from what I saw, it was from the front to the back of what we... He's asking to vacate, which is almost 1,000 square feet. He currently got a 3,000 square foot building, this is actually one-third of this building, he's asking to per- random. And then in the next photo, this is where he's claiming the right of way, that the rail went all the way to the sidewalk. That shadow shows that the sidewalk was open to the public, that the railing did not go all the way. Although in one of these, I showed that it is against the building, that I have a photo given the vote that shows it is out a little ways, but definitely not three, or I think eight feet. And so I could show you that as well. In the next photo, you actually see somebody walking next to the rail on the sidewalk. Based on my building, this is prior to 1920, when my building got redone. So that sidewalk was open to the public and not all the way closed off from the railing of as early as 1920. This is the photo, the next photo is the photo from his book where you can't really see it because it's a picture of a picture on my phone. But if you look here at the steps, which are the same steps,
Right.
you can actually see that the railing stops at the second step.
Is as far out as what that open area was, very far from eight feet.
These stairs, where you've seen this way?
Yeah, because the lady goes down.
They were, they were all over town, and there are
Everywhere.
there are several left. But they were to access stores.
Right, correct. It was... So my building, the entire alley is hollow. And I have double doors on both sides where I can open up, you used to be able to drive a car into from the alley, the alleyway wasn't there, and you could literally drive in. And the tunnel is still there, but I don't have any right to it on top. So, and then also, in the next side, you can see the lags where that railing was attached. And the next one, you'll see photos from the Good Finch's Facebook page where they actually removed the wall in order to expose this. So this was not only vacated to the city, at some point in time, probably in the 80s, it was actually sealed off when they purchased it. So I'm not sure if there was some kind of permit that needed to be done, but children were down there opening it up. And it was 100% sealed upon purchase. So that was opened. And that's a picture of, I was down there that day, then they opened it up and discovered it. And then so the kids on the staircase, as you can see, it's definitely not eight feet. And then finally, there's a picture of the sidewalk open to the public taken from the sand pipe. I believe these pictures were taken in the late 1800s. And you can see that the sidewalk is completely opened. I actually found these pictures hung in not only the commission chambers, but in the code enforcement offices.
Josh, let me ask you a question. I haven't thought about this before. I can see that that was sealed off. I don't know when it was. I do know that, see, just before 2007, so 2005, 2006 was when all the sidewalks and all that was redone. That was right for that time. I mean, obviously, 2007, they were done, so it was right before. I know all this is sealed. In fact, if they filled the alley. Do they have the right to, these stores have the right to open that all up?
I have not, I don't.
Was it a permit issue to do this?
To open that up?
To open this up downstairs, still a building.
Yeah.
It's their building, but this is not outside of its wall, it's not theirs. This, here is not their building. Their building ends with this wall. It was vacant to the city.
Donnie, if I may, I spoke to different business owners. I did extensive research with the Traveler Archives before the meeting to try to be prepared. And it appears that sometime in the mid 80s, there was an initiative led by some of the downtown businesses to redo the sidewalks. They were amortized over a 10-year period, I think, something like that. And so the city and the business owners shared expense, but it was done at the understanding, the way I understand it, it was that the building owners forfeited that piece of property, and the city would pave it, and it would make it safer for everybody. Because I think people had fallen, there were a lot of people getting injured in the stairwells. And so it was a structural issue, it was a safety issue. And I think that there was an initiative taken by downtown business owners sometime in the 80s to start doing this.
When I first moved here, it was the very early 80s. And there were several still open, they were closed shortly after that. And my understanding at that point was that the owners of the buildings forfeited the ownership of those extensions.
Right, well, and if you think about it, it's...
So it became city property.
Yes, and the city doesn't want to, like, you don't want to leave... If it's the right of way, I think that they're getting in some sticky situation with like water and things like that, like what, water seeping into a private, you know...
Yeah, there was...
So I think there were some issues like that too, and they were solving all these problems all at once.
And it was, and it was old concrete that was covering the last blocks.
Yes.
And so there was a big safety concern at that point.
And to your point about the access, historic use of access, well, I think whoever advised you may have misinformed you, or maybe there's some misunderstanding about what historic use of access is truly for. That law is to protect citizens from people who use a passage. So if I have private property, and for the last 30 years, kids have been walking to the creek through my yard, and I've never objected, in that 30 years' time, they can make an argument to historic use of access to get to that creek through my land. And that's really what this is about. If anybody, it protects, it protects the people walking on the sidewalk, using the sidewalk. And if there was a claim to historic use of access, it would have been to access the downstairs buildings which no longer exist. And the public would have to make that claim, not the private property owner trying to find a way to vacate what's now public land. And that's my understanding of it now.
And that's historic use, historic right, it's a little different in that. Something that, like some of the places downtown have to the staircases, they're narrow. They cannot change them because they've used the historic right to keep them. Any change eliminates that historic claim. So, and that probably might be the way they are for the most part. They could close them off. But those happen, they're always signed ones, and they're not very long. But they, for some reason, were allowed to keep them at that point. So they kept their historic right to them, but they can't change them in any way. You would have trouble if you tried to, you'd have a problem if you tried to change your stairs you have in any significant way.
Oh, no, ma'am, we wouldn't change it though.
So, but there is no historic claim to what you're trying to do.
And if that's the case, so be it. I've just been trying to follow one lead to the next. So doing my due diligence, I get information, I follow to the next thing. This is the next step in the path.
This is one of my concerns, is that you opened it up.
Okay, now let me clarify that.
Did you contact the city?
That's inaccurate information.
Did you contact the city before you did any of this?
Did any of what, ma'am?
Did you contact the city at all before you opened?
There was nothing opened up. That's not accurate. So when we bought our building, we discovered in removing the lime wash that was laying on the ground, that we had six, I think it was floor joists that were hanging over nothing. So that floor had, there's a breeze block there that we've since had repaired. We had to raise it for nine and a half inches, they pulled permits from all of that. So there was no opening it up, it had already crumbled. So all we did was remove the debris. Same thing with our tunnels, the tunnels in front of the building, they were there, they just had dirt and trash stacked, you know? And so we removed, like I said, we've taken out 38 tons of material from the building.
All right. That actually is a side point we're discussing tonight, but I did want to bring it up.
I can have one more thing when it comes to the inconvenience of losing that eight feet. Myself, and I have permission to say Graves Drug, both have on several occasions received pallets. The only way for us to get pallets is for the pallets to be dropped at the alley and then pallet jacked up Washington around the corner and then unloaded from the front of our buildings because both of our buildings are stairs in the back. And so it makes it very difficult to receive pallets. So we actually have to have the trucks come and pull in at Washington, unload the pallets, pallet jacket up. We can't receive them from the front because of the cars and the curb. We can't receive them from the ramps on the front because they have those little frumpy knobs, so the pallet jacks can't go over it. Believe me, I had to put pallets back on trucks and have them move or drive around. But, so the only way for me to receive a pallet for my shop is to have it dropped up the alley at Washington, pallet jacked up that sidewalk around, and then unloaded it from the front. And not being, and having it drop down would be major inconvenience and be concerned on whether or not we could actually do it. Because I've measured the cars that park there and they go over two feet, right? So we're really looking at four feet, which is the size of a pallet, but man, would it be close and very difficult.
Okay.
So do you have a plan B if we reject this? That's your...
Well, I mean, I guess the next step would be asking what we can do. Because as it stands, those stairs are a nightmare, and, you know, I'm not steady on my feet to start with. And so I think it will forever limit access to the house side of the building because it's just, it's a booger. And the other thing is, is that right now, we have people who just randomly appear inside the house, people open the door, they come in. Thankfully, sometimes I can understand it, UPS drivers, FedEx, excuse me, drivers, I think they think it's like the lobby of a commercial, you know, like a bigger residential place. So I think I've got those people solved. But we've also just had people curious who come through the door, and then some people who I, I'm not sure about their substance abuse situation, just kind of wandered in. And those windows were hoping to start restoring them. A lot of the old windows are still there. So, you know, this, to me, was a way to take care of a lot of problems, add some security, add some safety into the building. You can see in those pictures, our AC units are like affixed to the side of the building. We're going to be redoing the third and second floors, putting in HVAC. And so if we had that space, I could then take those off the wall, put the other units there. So honestly, if it doesn't go through, I'm not sure what the next step is. So I...
Don't you have access to your apartment from the front?
Yes, ma'am. You can come through on the summit entrance and you could walk through all of it to there.
I've been in your apartment, lovely.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice and welcome.
Yeah, the Schmitz did a really nice job taking care of the place, and we're trying to, you know, pick up where they left off and move the ball forward. My thing is, is that if you look at our building from the side, it's five sections. And right now, we, we're going to, most of the building is my home and storage at the moment. You know, in future, we plan to redo the upper floors, but thinking about the long-term utility, not just planning for me and while I'm alive, you know, if at some point down the road, somebody wanted to put that building back to apartments, it would be easier. it would be easy to do it because you could segregate the store, the first three sections on the main level from the, the rest of the building and then use that old address, one oh four, to go in to the second and third floors. Because there's stairs there, the elevator's there, all that kind of stuff is. So, and, so yeah, I'm not quite sure what we, what the next step would be. Like I said, I've just been asking questions and following advice, so that's what led me here.
Okay, so you do have access from the front. And locking your side door would take care of people just walking into it and having even the security that you don't think you have at this point. It would end anybody just opening the door and locking in. I lock my front door. As for future development, that's something that would be addressed at a later point when we're at that point. When you bought the building, you knew it was as it is, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Um, does anybody, anything else?
I just, I have a couple other concerns. Like, I, I really do have a concern that if this was to go through, it would set an awful precedent.
I agree.
And it would, it would transform, potentially transform all of downtown. And, and it might not be in a way that is good for the community. And I, I think your sketch looks lovely.
Thank you.
I think that it's, 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 you know, it looks very picturesque. But it's also, I wish that, you know, I could just make a claim to a thousand more square feet to add on to my properties. But that's just not, that's just not the reality of the situation. Furthermore, if it's just getting the steps up to code, if that is truly the concern here, there must be another way to go about this. My biggest concern, sir, and I don't know you personally, but what I see being a problem in our city is, in many rural towns across Middle America, is we have a dying main street. And we have to tread a fine line between further strangling it by denying things like this.
Right.
And walking naively into a situation where we give a person the opportunity to make some substantial gains to their property and make it more lucrative and more valuable to the next person that they're gonna sell it to and leave another empty building and walk away with a whole bunch more money at the city and the taxpayer, like our expense. We lose land, you've got a building that's gonna sit empty. I, there's nothing about the situation besides the pretty picture that I personally see that I like.
I'm very concerned about precedent. We, okay, this, I could see them happening all over town.
And how could we say no?
And how could we say no if you said yes to one you can't? And this comes up over, over again. That is something that we really must consider with this commission is the precedent we're setting. And that affects a lot of town.
Well, if, if I may, I don't think either of your concerns are, are not valid. I'm an unknown. I've never met each other before, I haven't been. So, you know, we, you have no way of knowing my intent or, or anything like that. So I, I can appreciate that. To be very clear, the, the reason we're here is because I've been trying to find solutions to problems. That's it. I get, we, we start discussing doing the second and floor remodel. I get told by Mike that when we do that, he'd like us to find a way to get the air conditioners off the side of the building. Okay, I don't have roof access right now. I've never had an air conditioner on a roof that isn't a nightmare. So it's like, how do, how do I solve this problem? And so when we were cleaning out the basement and found the old doorways and then found the staircase, it was like, oh, well, maybe this is the answer to, to our problem. As far as the, the depth we've asked for, it was literally based on taking measurements from the windows of the wall in the basement and then looking at where that landed with the awning and saying, this would look attractive as opposed to not. If, if a lesser, if a lesser width is what's required to help people get their deliveries and things, you know, I don't wanna be a nuisance neighbor. And I can also understand your concerns about, you know, it just happening all the time. And, you know, I.
Tony, I'm personally not interested in a lesser width either. I don't want to, I don't want these opening up all over town. I am very concerned that there is an open area that you are able to access and that is a tremendous liability to the city and that's something we'll have to look into immediately. Now, under your building, you have access into that area and I can see it from the pictures. However, it happened, it's there at this point and it's a big liability. So we'll have to address that.
Respectfully, I don't think it's any different than the tunnel that's at the front. It's the, you know, it was, like I said, it's the same difference. All we did was clean out the dirt.
So, um, I don't want to, truthfully, I don't wanna add anything there. I, I don't wanna set any more precedent. We already have some of these staircases. They're there and they've been there many, many, many years. I've seen, and maybe you have too, I've seen pictures. They used to have big fans to put air under the, these sidewalks. Big glass blocks on the tops of the, of the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Many stores under there. And, but at some point it was ended. And then just before ninety-seven, no, I'm sorry, two thousand and seven, there was a big movement of downtown sidewalks, corners, everything was redone. All re-engineered and all redone. I don't wanna go backwards.
And I don't blame you for that position. And honestly, if you guys have other ideas on how we can get a different entrance in, I, I'm open to hearing that. So, you know, like I said, this is just the, the next step that was presented to me. If there's another step, I'm happy to take it. So I'm, I'm, what I'm looking for tonight, boss, is a solution. How we get that solution, if it's mine, if it's something else, if it's some combination thereof, that's, that's fine with me. So I'm not, I'm not married to anything.
Some of the stairs downtown have staircases that go up from the fronts, the front areas. You know, it's between.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you don't, do you?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So your only access to the, if it was above the second, third, would we have to be an access you made from inside? Which means you would sacrifice some of your, probably your storefront to make a staircase that went up. And that's the way it is, that is the way. Tony, I'm sorry, but that's the building you bought. And, and this one is not new news to you. So that's where I'm at. I'm very concerned about precedent. Don't on the start, if you're going to this downtown, that I wanted in this particular, and eight feet is extreme. But does any other commissioner have anything to say?
I'll just, I'll just chime in a little bit, kind of similar thought process. But I mean, I guess first of all, I've, I've seen, seen your videos online and I know you're trying to do a lot of things for downtown. I, I liked a lot of what you're trying to do together. So I, I'm on board with that. But like I said, I mean, if, if you give away any land, anybody owns that land, they can do whatever they want with it. And then what do they put there? You've got places downtown that are just storage. As long as they have more space, it's gotta be more. You may be able to deny it for the next.
What happens after I'm gone?
Well, I've heard of that. Right, that building has been a number of places.
So I, I don't know that, you know, given that free rate for anyone just to pile stuff up at any point on any block, would, would, the city wouldn't have any advantage to do that, I don't think. They, I mean, yeah, I don't know if there's some other solution. I potentially be over to something else on the back, those little tiny stairs? If there's some other way to make those stairs slightly more usable, I don't know, but.
To change them at all eliminates. They are grandfathered in, those wooden stairs. They are any grandfathered because they were allowed to remain as they are. If they're changed, it loses the grand.
And I guess that's only a piece of what you're trying to solve. You've got air conditioners, you've got all the kinds of different, kind of solves and their problems with this. The stairs aren't giving them that level.
The AC is a simple part. The mother of.
I'm sorry.
The air conditioner is a simple part.
Yeah, I've, I've had a number of people say, well, we could stick them up on the roof. I just, I have not had, we, we had some older buildings in the Galeno District in Wichita that I was involved in redoing and it just, I've never seen that not be a problem. So that was kind of my, my last resort. If that's what we have to do, then, you know, if you're, if you're left without options, you're left without options. But I'm gonna pursue alternatives while I can.
If there are no other comments, I'll move we close public hearing.
Thank you. On a second?
Second.
On favor of closing public hearing, if I were not.
Aye.
Opposed? Josh, would you like a vote?
Yep, you, you'd motion, no?
Yes, and this is a roll call, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, I need a motion to approve this or negate it.
I'll make a motion that we negate the question.
Denied. Do I have a second motion to deny this?
For a second.
Josh?
So.
I'm sorry.
Just to be clear, the motion is to deny.
Motion is to deny. All in favor of the motion signify with aye.
We're gonna roll call.
We're going to do that. We want to approve the motion.
Yeah.
So.
That's right.
Okay, on favor of.
Aye.
I oppose. Josh, it's yours.
Getting Lloyd Colston?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, and remember, this is, a yes is to deny.
Right.
That's how the motion.
I hadn't think about that.
Brandon Jones? Chris Johnson?
Yes.
Travis Peirman?
Yes.
Cody Richardson?
Yes.
And Dottie Smith?
Yes. Motion is denied. Hope you find something, solution that will work.
Okay. Thank you, we come in with your input.
You can stop it or I'm running you off.
You don't want a carport. You don't want a carport in front of your store? Actually, you have plenty of that stuff.
Fantastic.
Bye, everybody. Okay, Josh.
Okay, so first of all, I need to make an apology. I was focused on that case and I did not print out a copy of the proposed amendments.
What?
So my fault, I'll probably just summarize what it was. It will be up here and it was in your pocket. So where this is coming from? So we all know we had a bad house arm injured. And so I have had an important number of requests for carports. Now, many of them were able to get them in a backyard area or somewhere that's not on the front yard setback. But there are a few neighborhoods in town where there is no rear access. So one of those neighborhoods is Brad Meek. Their, their lots are basically just enough for the house to sit on. And so, and then they, some of them have kind of, it's not really an alley. It's more like an east member where the utilities are. Some of them are open, some of them are not. So the problem is, I have to immediately deny every one of those requests if they want it in the front yard because our regulations don't allow it. There's not really a good way to get around that. I actually have a request that's going to come before the Board of Design evolves in October for one of these situations on Meek Avenue. I forget the exact address. Where they want to go ahead and build one on the front. This, I don't wanna give you too much because we're gonna deal with that next month. But they wanted to build it where it matches the, the front of the house. So, and it's built on site and it won't be one of those metal ones. That's, so I wanted you to be aware that that is coming. And this is a response to that. Usually when we get a lot of variances for something, we try to look at the regulations to see if, well, maybe that's what needs to change. Maybe we don't change it at all. But because of that request, I wanted to go ahead and see what we could do, see if it's even reasonable at all to change this. And so what I did is I looked at the regulations and I checked with a whole bunch of different cities to see how they handle carports in that front of the house. One of them, I was actually surprised by, is very lenient, is Pocahonti. Apparently, that's not a free-for-all. They, they allow a lot of them down there. That's not saying that we need to do what Pocahonti does. I'm not saying that at all. But what this, what my proposal, the way I wrote it, does is allow for an exception. So this would not be a case for every property in the city. The way I wrote this, this would be an exception for areas that specifically do not have rear access. So you could put a carport there, but you couldn't get to it. So it was kind of pointless to have a carport in the backyard if you can't access it, of course. What this would do is allow an exception in neighborhoods that do not specifically have a platted alley. Brad Meek would be one.
Summit?
There are some places along Summit Street, between First and Summit Street, so on the west side only. Mostly from birth to Kansas. There's also a section along Summit and First Street, south of Madison, that has the same issue where they have, in some cases, there's just a, a house and then there's a house behind it on First Street. So, and then there's a couple places along Sixth Street as well where the, where the railroad used to be. Six, Sixth and Seventh kind of area where that's happened a little bit. However, there, it's not quite the same thing because there, if you know the area, that technically is an alley there, it's just not a great. But those are through lots as well where there's not an alley. And then the other one, I think the only other one was on, like Highland Drive.
What about where I live, about Summit Acres?
Yes, and Summit Acres would actually be similar. Now, the thing about Summit Acres, Crestwood, East Ridge, all those areas is the lots are usually bigger. So like, I'll use your property as an example. There's other places on the lot that you could probably make it work without having to access it from the backyard.
So this is really a question about setup. Sorry, it's not, not that there's a lot against the carport in front, it's just it's close to the street.
Yeah, no, there is not a thing that says carports are not allowed in the front of the house. We don't have regulations. Now, it's on neighborhood money.
Didn't they have something that they could extend from the front?
So there used to be a provision back before we did these, the amendments in two thousand and fourteen, it's a bit more time now, that allowed for carports to be in the front. It is actually, some of this language is very similar to what was used back then. What had happened then is, this is the right terminology, I always wrote this way, but you would come, you would request a variance and the Board of Design evolves could give you a variance in order to allow you to put the carport there. Now, it's not, it's not really a variance, that's an exception. So the way I wrote this is very similar to that. However, because of the restriction of having it only in neighborhoods that don't have an alley, I made it to where it's an administrative. Now, you could also tie this back to how it worked before where you have to get an exception from the Board of Design evolves every time. The only concern I have with that is, we might have a lot of requests come before the Board of Design evolves. And that goes back to the, if we're getting all these exceptions, especially if the Board of Design evolves is granting them, then that tells me that we need to adjust the regulations.
I have a carport and I had to go before it's only variance. Mine does not extend beyond the front of the house, but I still have to get a variance. It's on the side of the house.
Oh, yeah, maybe because of the side yard tonight?
Yeah.
That's wrong.
And they were approved and, yeah, that's a problem. But I, I know, I don't remember when I was in the office or not, there was something set in women's past that carports could not come beyond the front of the house. That is still in effect unless it has been changed by.
I haven't seen anything specific to carports. But again, the issue is, isn't even that. The issue for us right now, the reason I'm denying those, is the front yard setback. So if, if all I wanted to do was add on to the front of their house out of porch or something, a porch, I still would deny it because they are incriminating.
That doesn't stop them from doing it a little bit again, and that's not catching them.
Yes, that has not been denied. Yes, that has happened tonight. Fearfully admit that that has happened for some, in fact, Ian Bradmeek, there's a few cases. So you were gonna give me a bonus or something?
I was gonna vote for you.
Your honor, your pay.
I'd give you a bonus.
But yeah, anyway, so this was my solution to a potential problem. And, and like I said, uh, that one application is coming to you, to the Board of Designate Bills, uh, next month. So I just, I wanted to give you a heads up that that one is coming. So you could arguably do absolutely nothing with this and then hear what they have to say at the meeting next month, make up the decision or check away. And, uh, and it'd just be done and, and you would just start changing that. I'm not necessarily saying you have to change it, I'm just breaking it in some sense.
It would still have to be, those lots, like in the Bradmeek area, their, their house takes up the lot. So put one in front, have to be covered in windows, but also it still has, what is the setback from the neighbors?
Yeah, you would still have to honor that.
What is the front setback, the, what is the current, trying to read down there, set, at least about five feet from the property line?
That would be under this proposal. So right now it's twenty-five.
Okay.
And basically, in, in Bradmeek's an easy example, those houses, if you look at them, they're all lined up. Which is the whole purpose of front yard and setback, that's what we're trying to get them to do. It helps with what the neighborhood looks like, it helps with property values. Now, that's an older neighborhood, now, but still, I mean, it does, it would change the look if you had a whole bunch of stuff in this, certain street. Including carports, they did a twenty-foot, touched the house with it, and I'm picturing those metal ones. Right, well, and this, did I?
Then it began five.
He said that's the incomparable material.
Yes, so I did leave that language in there.
Okay.
So you, you wouldn't be able to do a metal carport unless you had.
And you might tie it to the house?
Yes, that is from the two thousand and fourteen, prior to the two thousand and fourteen convention. So now, you're in construction, you know what, that sounds a little strange, but it's just up here. Did it tie it in, that the house is not necessarily, you know, tied to that?
So it looks like an extension of the house.
Yeah, that's what pushed the closing, for six years.
Yeah.
It says you can't go close it then.
Oh, yeah. Oh, but, but.
And, and it will be used as storage junk.
Yes. It'll become a bedroom.
Yeah. And, and windows.
Or laundry room.
And it may not be our, what we're concerned about, but what, what about the property values of everybody around there with property taxes? Like, when that person puts one of those in, adds that on there, there's nothing you can really do as a neighbor that, like, if we're talking about older neighborhood, I'm guessing older people of fixed incomes. And what are they gonna do when they can't afford their property taxes? Because your neighbors built this and everybody's prices are going up.
Not only that, I mean, and Bradmeek area is an area where there are a lot of young families.
Oh, there are?
But, but then you have to consider young families.
Yeah, nobody does right now, do they?
And so my concern, I'm concerned is, what's happening in Valley? Because my neighbors are putting up these.
Pretty cool, right?
Now, that's true. When it's done, right, there's a few up in Wakefield.
Yeah.
I mean, they're gorgeous.
Yeah, they can be.
They, they extend out, that's not picturing, unfortunately, it's not what's gonna happen. They'll drop some four by fours, you know, just as cheap as possible.
Right.
And they will eventually be coming close, but it's just naturally, it will happen.
It'll happen.
Yeah.
So like I said, I'm not pushing.
You're not, you're not making it to get out there right now and find the front porch or something.
So what's the problem? They don't have anywhere to park the car that's covered?
Yeah.
Well, you know what, I got a carport on my house and it's built so narrow, you couldn't pull the car in there if you wanted to. You know, like.
I know, I, I'd have a couple rentals, nobody ever can park again, it's all storage.
Yeah, absolutely, after, you know, you're, you're developing a lot. Yeah, but some of them have the garage, so it's, oh my gosh, I'm gonna get a car in there. Yeah, my carport, it was, the legal variance permit and all that, but it was done to enclose the sports car. So it is narrow. I have a RAV four now. I have a RAV four, yeah. But my husband can't open his door, I have to let him out beforehand, and it's short. Yes, it's, there was a certain amount of space I was allowed to use, um, and it was done well, but.
So is there a solution that we can give these people that doesn't include all the bad things that come along with this?
And a car coverage?
And just claim it with your insurance? That's what everybody has to do tonight.
I'd be interested in, you know, that's a one big area that has that. What does everybody in the area think? If you had a hundred people here, would they, do they all want it or they don't, they don't want it?
So, so for that case?
That's a very good question.
I specifically suggested that if you're really wanting this to pass, that you could talk to your neighbors and try to get them to show up. So if half the neighborhood comes in and says, we want this, then it might weigh a little different in your mind, that's.
Right.
Has, has that area been notified in any way? This is on the meeting?
Not, no, not the, not what we're doing tonight. But the, that, that hearing for next month, yes, it, it'll go outside everybody with that two hundred people.
So we're not voting on this, it's a discussion, right?
Yeah, this was intended only for discussion. If you were, you were remotely interested in it, then we would move forward with amendment of a hearing. If you don't want to move forward with it, you're not hurting my feelings at all.
I think it would be interesting to hear if the neighborhood showed up what they had to say.
Right, well, that one will not, that, that, that particular case will.
And that's, that neighborhood, particularly Bradmeek, is great to manage.
So I'm kind of giving you a preview of what.
It's, uh, that would be the beginning of October, right?
Yeah, it's the fourteenth, I think, is the. What's the second Tuesday, the same, same week as this one. Um, and that would, uh, there's not anything on the planning commission agenda other than you approve the minutes and you go, I took orders on your bills. So, Brandon, if you don't want to come to that, you can.
He's giving you a.
Do I have to?
I think I'll, I'll have a barbecue that night, all of us.
There you go.
And then same thing with Mike. He would, we have a presentation. As far as I know, he's just, uh, traveling, that's why he's not here. Duane, as far as I know, just because we're here, is, is.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, okay. Yeah, that was Mike Bellison. See that?
I know, yeah, yeah, he just.
Okay, you have any with discussion on it, Josh?
Nope, we'll, we'll just set this down. If you wanted to bring it back, we can do that later.
So we have Bradmeek area. We had some on Summit, North and South. And some neighbors.
Well, I was thinking like, what about over there, like Colorado Street and by the River View Cemetery, like is?
Some of those don't have allowance.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, I didn't think about those.
Well, yeah, it's a couple of there though.
And you can't take a case by case basis?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we can still do this case by case, absolutely.
Are they required to give some sort of architectural plans or something similar?
If I was to follow this, I would ask for some amendments or architectural plans, but.
But you're in a sole apartment.
Something, you gotta have a drawing, that's what you're.
Site plan, all of it.
Yeah, I was thinking Summit, and I don't think it's gonna improve the look of any of the houses.
It will.
I don't know that people goes on Summit necessarily. Yeah, just get a place to park their cars and their jackets.
Yeah.
No comment.
But those little metal ones won't be allowed?
Yeah, of course.
Ever, ever.
That's the problem, those don't, personally, they don't, they don't leave the backyard.
Almost in that way, though, because those you can just unbolt and get rid of, you know, I think you've got this, I think attached to your house. It's very difficult to close it. Yeah, yeah.
No, it's not, but, yeah, that's, that's all that was, was just, just letting you know what I'm hearing.
Closing the man is just telling you that they look good, it's a new drawing piece as well.
It's interesting trying to provide utility to somebody so that they can do what they need to do with the property while also balancing other things like, in my opinion, privacy fences don't look good after a couple of years if they're not taken care of. We allow those all day long, you know, so, I don't know, there's a, there's a lot to consider, but, um.
And those are not allowed.
Oh, privacy.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I get those are best of all the time. Oh, I wanna put a fence up, where are you gonna put it? Over on the front yard? Can't be six foot tall, well, that's not a privacy fence, I know.
Just make sure you, you're aware.
We have, we have that conversation probably once a week.
Did you talk to any, I'm sorry, I don't mean to draw this out, one more question, did you talk to any other cities that don't, like, that gun, went the other way from Ponca, like Ponca's very lenient, what did the other cities have?
So I have a lot of cases, I have a lot of contacts in the city area. No, never. Um, like I think, I talked to somebody in Alleva, and several, a couple others, what was that one? Mission, I think I talked to somebody that's been in Mission. Absolutely, they, they wouldn't even, they wouldn't even consider this discussion right here. But that's, they got, a lot of them have covenants and stuff that wouldn't allow it.
So. Okay, uh, where again, see some of the places?
Um, up there by the high school, um, what's that, that strip?
Street biking avenues or?
No, further, further west, that strip mall. There's a little gas station on the corner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You take, go straight north on there, there's two side by side that got built fifteen years ago. They come way out, they just have two posts, gorgeous.
Yeah, the little street.
You might check that out.
Yeah.
There's, I was in Bradmeek on, what's the, what's the Stewart, the Stewart's had. It's on C, it's on C Street. Uh, you pass it every time you're going to the middle school or radio lane, radio lane. It's on the corner of one of those streets.
C and radio lane?
No.
Every one of those is in the.
It's like, oh, San, or Stanley Drive or one of those, but it's on C Street. And, um, that's one of the houses, um, we happened to drive by, one of the inspect, older inspectors um, happened to drive by and there popped up a, a carport. I mean, it's nice, they did a good job, it still looks good.
They permitted?
No, it was a weekend job is what that one was.
They should whip construction, but that's quick.
Oh, he'd be surprised.
He'd be surprised.
Oh my gosh, can I get a bunch of luggies over there? Yeah.
Oh, will it be towed or, or, or not?
No.
That's a bit for store.
That's your math.
Yeah, on the sound, it was really nice looking, well, it dropped it, it had to come down directly right, right against the sidewalk. And, and it looked great, but it wasn't drugged for the sound.
Right.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah, you just put a house down there on South C, fourteen hundred watt, built many years ago, never lived in.
Oh, that was a, that was when Matt Roland first got here.
Hmm.
It was, it was a kid's house. It, it wasn't done right, I mean.
Oh, no, that one was done right, I remember, I, I owned a little rental next to it. I remember them doing it and some of the foundation, which is, it is for blocks, it didn't attach or nothing, it just was blocks. Yeah, it's never been lived in.
I didn't think it has a floor in it, does it?
Does it?
It's just a shell. You can't tell from the outside.
There is a shell of the house sitting on a lot here in our.
It's a lot. Yeah, not, geez, I don't know, it still is, it was nice looking from outside. And it did a nice job out from the outside.
I don't know why they didn't tear it down, but.
We made it tear it.
That's too much money going.
It's still there.
But they didn't do it like the bit, they, they did tell them, yeah.
But it's not an unsafe.
It's not unsafe, yeah.
So that's why it's.
Nobody lives in there, although last time I saw it, it was at the back door. So there's maybe something.
Coexistence.
Okay, we done?
What's the distress?
Okay, second. For motion, on a second, turn, on a favor, signify with aye?
Aye.